Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair? Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Item D is approach of allegiance among standing and joining the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item C is the presentation of Oklahoma Municipal League Service pins and their certificates to go with them to David Wright and Doug Scott.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, Tim Wright wasn't able to be here tonight. This is an annual thing that the Municipal League does for people that have more than 25 years of service. So Doug Scott is here, if you could meet me down front on.
Doug, we appreciate your service.
For 1025. Oklahoma Municipal League Inc. has entered upon its honor roll of service the name of Mr. Douglas Scott, City of Moore. So appreciate everything you do, congratulations.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of December the 17th, 2018. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of October 19th, 2018. Item C is declare a 2006 crane carrier LED side load refuse truck, then number 1C Y C C R 4867 T 047372, a 2006 crane carrier LED side load refuse truck, then number 1C Y C C L 5857047763, and a 2008 crane carrier LED side load refuse truck, then number 1C Y C C L 5858 T 048381 as surplus. Item B is accept two roadway utilities located in the northwest corner of section 26, township in north, range three west, being southwest 19th street and east of I-35 to serve the City of Moore. Item E is approve an agreement with the State of Oko- Oklahoma Department of Emergency Management for the FY 2019 emergency maintenance or management program grant in the amount of $25,000. Item F is approve and ratified claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019 in the amount of $5,282,410.34.
Hey, Jeff, Greg.
Thank you. Thank you. Ask him if he can call for the votes, the consent docket.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider adoption of resolution number 92019 approving and affirming a lease purchase agreement and authorizing the execution of the same, authorizing the employment of financial advisor and bond counsel pertaining to financing and authorizing city officials to execute any and all necessary documents in connection with the aforementioned transactions.
Mayor and Council, this item allows the city to enter into a lease purchase agreement to finance the police records management and computer aid dispatch software. Chris Gander, our financial advisor, is here and he has some comments.
All right, thank you.
We were here at your last council meeting and talked then that we'd be back, and so this was the software for police. And with that proposal, they had given you some financing terms. Mr. Mitchell called and just said, asked if we could look around, see if we get better terms, and preferably do it with a local bank instead of an out-of-state bank. So with that, we called the banks that have participated in the past in your GO-bond or your media notes as well. And so with that, in front of you, that governmental capital is what was provided from the software provider at 3.92 percent. We had two banks that were lower than that, RCB Bank at 3.5, and then Bank First at 3.25. So you're, we're not officially authorizing to go, but we're moving forward with Bank First to get this closed, and we anticipate closing around the 15th. And you've seen this a lot lately. I realized, we did the GO-bond, we authorized the sale, then we awarded the bonds, and then that will close the end of this month. The GO-bonds are a slower transaction than this, so that's in the process. There's a contestability period, and it'll close the 30th. This will be closed, kind of came after, and will close before that other transaction. So happy to answer any questions.
Just to let the audience know, we are not raising taxes at this time.
That is correct. Always a good question. I should just say that right when I get up here first.
I know, you usually do. Anybody else?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Second. Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? Would you call for the votes, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is consider approval of fiscal year 2019 budget supplement to the budget loan receipts and related expenses for the new police records management system software and computer aid and sign CAD software in the amount of $470,000.
Mayor and Council, this item will allow us to spend the funds that we will receive from this lease purchase. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
Make a motion, Mr. Greg.
Second. Would you call for the votes, since there's no other discussion?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of revised job description for the position of Assistant City Manager and approve the placement and pay grade 126 of the city salary table approved by the city council on June 20th, 2016. The effective date, I assume, is going to be noted, instead of July of 2018, will be July 1st, 2019? Is that correct?
That was the date the pay scale went in, the current pay scale went into place.
Okay, okay. Then it was due 2018. All right. Do we have a motion?
I have a question. Is this pretty much what the Assistant City Manager does now, is that where this job, or is it kind of a hybrid?
Well, no. Mayor and Council, what, the change that's made to the, the only change that's made to this job description is to add engineering qualifications, something to consider. So otherwise, everything else is the same.
Okay. That's a good question. Anybody else?
Would you call for a?
Oh, thank you.
Second.
You have something, Melissa. Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider appointing a director to the regional transit authority of central Oklahoma with the initial term for the trust indenture ending on June 30th and the year following a successful referendum establishing a dedicated funding source for the authority's operation.
Mayor and Council, this was the trust indenture that you approved recently, and as part of that, it's up to the city council to appoint a director to serve representing the City of Moore on that board, so.
I've had the opportunity to be the city representative for the RTA, the regional transit authority, and which will actually become the authority. The goal is to have a ceremony sometime in February, maybe the latest, March, announcing all of the city's representatives, and then they will begin their responsibilities as a trust, and they'll go forth and do what they have to do. Having said that, I would like to ask the council to consider Mr. Steed, of course, our former city manager, who's very well-versed in city government finances, and has lived here, and knows our city and our people well. I think he would serve well in that capacity, but just put that court count for consideration.
Have you spoken with him?
I visited with him to see if he would be interested, and he said that he would be.
And I've visited with him a couple of times, and he is interested.
Okay, okay. So do we?
You want to make that as a nomination?
A motion?
An emotion?
Yeah, that'd be great. I would nominate Mr. Steed as a service of the City of Moore to be my candidate for the board.
Okay. Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Would you call for the votes? There's no other discussion? Anybody else have any? And ask Melissa, yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval of the job description with the position of senior building maintenance technician and approve placement in the pay grade of 109 in the city's salary table approved by city council on June 20th, 2016, as effective July 1st, 2018.
Mayor and Council, the position of senior building maintenance technician, if approved, would allow the building maintenance department of the public works department to assign an employee to train custodial staff and to supervise the custodial and building maintenance staff in the absence of the supervisor. Staff recommends approval and placement of this budgeted position in pay grade 109. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have, and Richard Sandofer is here as well.
This is the budgeted position?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair? Sorry. Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item A is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held December 17th, 2018. Item B is approve and ratified claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019 in the amount
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? It is a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine, well, this time we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number nine is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held December 17th, 2018. Item B is approve and ratified claims and expenditures for FY 2018, 2019 in the amount
Vote for first.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? It is a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item number 10 is new business. We have one person signed up to speak under item A, citizen form, private son of the agenda, Vicki Heflin. And if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. What I would like to talk about is something I know you guys don't want to hear, but you need to hear it. I live right next door to a family that smokes. I'm allergic to smoke. And I did some research on it, and I thought I knew where the papers were right before I left, so I didn't look beforehand, and they weren't there. But the research shows, and I did only outside, I didn't do inside because that wasn't what I was looking at. And basically, secondhand smoke, even outside, hurts you as much as inside, if you're that close to it. And as you know, in the Rock Creek area, the homes are very close together, and it's just like when they smoke, it's like they're smoking in my yard, right next to me, and it gets all up in my lungs, and I cough. And so I would like the city council to consider ordinances, kind of like you have here, 25 feet, for the property rights of non-smokers. Now, there's nobody has the right to poison anyone else, and no one can give you that right. You don't have the right to hurt somebody else. And now, it encompasses marijuana, too, because that's going to be a consideration now. And I know that my neighbor has said, if somebody smokes marijuana around his son, he's eight years old, there's going to be a huge problem. So not only does what I'm asking include tobacco smoke, but also marijuana, because that's, that's going to be a huge deal. And I would like the city council to consider this, please, the ordinances that you cannot just smoke around somebody else's private property, because we have rights to. And I'm not going to spend all next summer in the house because they're smoking, and I can't breathe it in. And nor should I have to. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. And we'll look into it.
Vicki?
It's worth telling you.
Would you tell us your address for the record?
2629 Southeast 7th Street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Item B is item from the city council across these.
Brooks, do we have any current ordinances that involve smoking residences and the smoke laws on this?
I don't believe so.
Do other cities, do we know?
I haven't had a chance to research.
Yeah, if we can just see if other cities have anything involving that, what that would look like.
I guess your property rights would come into play.
Yeah.
There is, Randy, is there?
No, the tobacco regulation has been preempted by the state, and the state gives cities certain authority, and only that authority and the regulation of tobacco. And those involved, of course, city buildings and facilities, cars, things of that nature, the car we have in place, right, are city property. And of course, possession and sale to minors. Otherwise, all tobacco legislation is preempted by the state. But you're not going to find, you're not going to find any municipal powers that are going to attempt to try and force or pass ordinances dealing with private sectors that have to be done by state.
So, so she would need to talk to Representative McBride?
State Representative or Senator?
Yep.
How I can say?
Come in state, yep.
You, you, Senator, if they're the ones that can do anything about it, we're unable to do it, but something the state says that.
It's a legal in the state, right.
And other states, the reason that I can't hear, other states have taken this up and are making laws and ordinances.
Right. Probably at the state level.
First time I've heard of it. I have to explain it another one, yeah. Okay. All right. Any items from anyone else in the trust duties? How about the city manager?
Just would like to thank Richard Sandofer and the Public Works Department for the great job they did on getting our streets cleared with the snow, and then they also got one of the parks cleared out so the fire department could do an agility drill. So kudos to you, Richard, and your staff.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, item 11 is executive session. Section 307, Title 25, Oklahoma statutes prevents the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may just may consider and adopt a motion to meet executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, receive an update and discuss negotiations between the City of Moore and the High AAF Local 2047 as authorized by 25 Oklahoma statutes 307B-2.
Make a motion, we convene the executive session.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. We are, we mean to executive session, thank you. We're in, we're in to executive session. Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Yes. Thank you.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Yes. Thank you.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
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 Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Item carries. Item number 12 is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
We are reconvened from executive session. Do we have a motion?
Motion, we proceed as directed in the executive session?
Second.